I'll make a motion to approve the minutes because we're too producing.
Have a motion of second for approval of minutes. Judy?
Aye.
Tom? All right, Grant?
Aye.
Claims and payroll?
What was the smaller move for Tyler?
Both Tyler and Mark. Yeah.
I like a motion to approve claims and payroll.
Yeah, that was probably the library and what had him going in based upon what was best between that area between Cheryl Haley and ours, that's the library trees and it's not just trees, it's a lot of shrubs and bushes and Larry just kind of took care of junk, there you go.
There's probably like fifty fifty shrubs and trash.
Yeah.
Have a motion of second to accept claims and payroll, Judy?
Aye.
Don? Mike? Manor report?
I just come tonight because of the city sales tax that I asked last month, we're working on the tables and chairs for the new dining room. Foundation has put ten thousand towards it, right now I got the tables ordered, tabletops and the table bottoms, they're coming from two separate companies. I have the bills here tonight for them, that is nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. When I get a little bit more time then we're gonna be working on the chairs, it is a thirty-three thousand dollar project that we're working on. So, that's what I thought I'd come with the city sales tax to do the tables right now and take care of that, those two bills that have come in. I expect to see the tables probably in about four weeks now, because I think I've had them ordered for about two weeks already. So, I do have those two here, if that would be okay by you guys to use that sales tax for that. And then when the foundation has ten thousand, I'll just kind of put the chairs with that too, and I'll have to come back and probably ask for some additional funds to take care of the rest of that project. That's one thing, I just wanna let you know the foundation's having a fundraiser on the twenty-eighth at the Methodist Church on Sunday. It's gonna be from eleven to one-thirty and they're having a ham meal to try to raise some more funds for this project, eleven to one-thirty. And then as you probably have seen in the paper, I've got some things going on in the building, I'm looking for a dietary manager, her last day is Friday. And my activities director's moving back to California at the end of the month. So, we've got some positions open there and we have started staffing with Influenza A. So, as of today, or yesterday, I was a social worker, the maintenance man, the dietary manager and the activities director. So, that's why I haven't gotten no chairs ordered. So, as the staff stays out if they have it as long as I possibly can, hopefully we won't spread it through the building. At this time we have no residents to have it.
Julie and I spoke briefly about this and my recommendation is to certainly get the sales tax to her so she can get her tables and chairs.
I make a motion to approve using the sales tax funds for your tables.
I'll say again. Have a motion of second for using city sales tax for Julianne's chairs, Judy?
Tables.
Or tables, my bad.
Do you want me to come back for chairs when I have the bill?
Strike.
Uh, yeah, I'm going to, I still have the bill on the chairs yet.
Can I get the amount from you again?
Nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-three thirty-seven, you can have these two copies, I'll give them to you.
You want me to make it up to you or to them?
Me, because we had to pay it, yeah.
She said aye.
Judy, you said aye?
I said aye.
Oh, Mike or Grant?
Do you want me to come back with the chairs when I get the bill done? I sure can. And then I just wanna thank the city with the blizzard the other day, yes, I had a maintenance man in there, but I stayed with contact with Mike a lot throughout the day. I was having trouble even in town getting staff in, and so I was working with Mike a lot and said, you know, can this row be plowed real quick and I can get three staff in? So, kudos to Mike and probably kudos to my husband, because if it wasn't for him with the tractor, we wouldn't have got a lot of staff in. So, and I was trying to talk to the city, you know, when we're using our tractor, it's my personal tractor, nothing to do with the manor. So, I've talked to the board in the past, when that comes to that, you know, we usually just fill Jim up with a tank of diesel and he actually moved a lot of snow, because a skid loader only does so much and can push it back so much. So, you'll probably see that coming up in the bill later on down the road. Stein Kraus service is a little higher, he did fill himself up, because he pretty much moves snow all day for us up there, but thanks to the city.
Could you retract that though?
What?
Could you retract that, thanks for the blizzard?
Well, yeah, it's not for the blizzard, but thanks to the city. I never like to see blizzards, but, yeah.
Thanks Jim and Ari again, too.
I will.
Yeah, I absolutely, I just have to apologize as you're walking on, but I mean, I know that one last trip, we were afraid, her tractor was in better shape to get there than even the maintainer, that's how bad it was getting on Tuesday, we just didn't know we could even get there.
And thanks to the staff, I mean, I had nurses come in twenty-four hours ahead of time to make sure that they could be there and Jim would just go get them with the tractor at somebody's house and bring them on in, and so, thanks.
One other thing you brought up about your four people missing, I see in your bio that you do have a...
Yes, we do have, it says great consecutive. Patty has been asked to, or sent a letter, because she had missed three. And I have brought attention to Becky Bowler is willing to join on and Darren needed to appoint her to the board if that's agreed upon by all you guys.
Yeah, next month, we'll put more back, but in the meantime...
Yeah, I spoke with Julianne about it, I'm good with that.
And I don't even have a forum for February meeting due to the date of the meeting, and then we tried a couple days before, a couple days after, then financials couldn't be done, there's really nothing pressing, so we will not have a meeting in February, so you won't see any minutes. And then we'll do one, unless I need a special meeting, then I'll make the protocol, like this week of March. But I had three board members that couldn't be there for the next meeting.
I guess while she's still here too, in your packets, you received the audit, and I went through the audit several times, and it's a very clear looking audit. I think that you'll see some increase in net position, but in general, most of that was probably, I think, seventy-five thousand on actually liquid cash and things that came from the sales tax overall.
Improvements, yep.
So, I mean, basically, I thought it was almost a wash in the year before, it was like almost even, so, but it does show a higher net position, so.
And the only comment once again that I have is we're small building, you know, I got Cheryl and myself running around the whole office and just doing a lot of double checks. You know, I sign off on this, she counts that, that's always their comment in there, I don't remember a year that it hasn't been and...
We did go there too.
Yep, and so, it's just something we just try to do, the auditor, if you guys are looking over, board's looking over the numbers, you know, if any questions, don't hesitate to call. But there's no doubt in my mind that Cheryl did an excellent job and she needs to be commended for that, so. That's all I have.
How'd you come out on the emergency route, cars on the emergency route?
Not too bad, before the storm hit, had Tyler go around the night before.
On Monday night?
Again, Monday night, and he got a few of them moved, one guy decided to move one out and park another one in the same place. So, we had to do a second callback on him. But this ordeal here with this storm was kind of a little different. Not knowing which direction the guys were going and which way they were headed. You'll still see, we got a couple of them that were blocked in there, you can still see the marks in there and stuff. But the guy, I guess one thing I gotta say is the guys didn't do it like a regular system. You know, they hit where the worst parts were and instead of going, you know, from point A to point B straight through.
Yep.
So, yeah, we were kinda, it was a little different scenario this going around. But the last time we had this much snow was a good guess.
Seven years ago.
Two thousand nine and it wasn't even...
It wasn't, it wasn't half that much, yeah.
Not for one day, actually, it was spread out in two or three days.
Right, yeah. That was around New Year's Eve, wasn't it?
Around Christmas.
Christmas, yeah, that's right, it was Christmas Eve it started, didn't it?
Any questions over the numbers, end of the year this month?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is he still on Hawaii?
He's still on Hawaii, I'm gonna hand the board. As you can tell, it's a little bit different system, and rather than wait until everyone's just about exhausted and ready to go home with administrator's report, I think there are some things that, that you should be aware of. So, first the economic development group, happy to, I'll start off with the first part with the LBA forty. We have lots that the city in their wisdom, we talked about purchasing up there. Two of the individuals, well, one particular and the other one is gonna meet with Bruce, I think, this week, have agreed to purchase eight of them. Four for one party and four for the other. The one party may this week come with Bruce on other issues with taxes, I believe, and choose to only go with two, but it's nice to get it going. They're very well to the stipulations, they know what has to be done as far as the year and a half requirement. So, I think our first step on those, as under Bruce's advice, was we're not sure how all this will work with children's and, but we can't do anything until they actually come in, talk to Bruce and get the agreement going, so.
One of them's ready to sign a written offer and the other is close. On that question, I'd like to have a copy of the board's requirement about build it, to be real sure of what that says. I took it initially that it was build and occupy or something like that, that you were gonna use to build your own house and live there. While both these folks have been in, they're talking about building and selling. And maybe that's okay, but I wanna see what the board says to get the, get the cheap price and get something going there.
Yeah, and I think that's...
It's different than building and moving in.
I think, and I think that was the, and Bruce is right, I think...
Let me see their copies, if you would, give me something on that tomorrow, these folks wanna turn in their offers. And I think we need to make it clear to them what the rule is.
And I said, I think it's straightforward, then we get the minute show, and I talked with you, had an LBA forty meeting since that time too. And the board actually was very pleased, and I think they understand that if we, in an ideal world, had a contractor wanting to come in and build a house and sell it off, that would have been perfectly fine. So, that's where it comes from, is that both of these, one in particular, the first one, is going to do that, build it, occupy, sell it, move on and build it. And that was perfectly fine with the idea that he go ahead and make sure it happens within that year and a half. The other issue is James Kraus offered on that rising or house up there to basically give it away free, which we are supporting. The only thing that the LBA forty committee was very adamant about that they don't, somebody just isn't gonna take that home and move it across the road to one of those lots. And the board unanimously wanted to see that land somewhat preserved for new construction and, and there was no even question of that, so. And I wasn't sure how they felt about that until the last meeting, so.
In that, whatever they got wrote up, is there some kind of covenants that says what?
Yep.
Well, it's gotta go, it's in their minutes, but I think it's gotta go into purchase agreement.
The purchase agreement would truly be the covenant.
I want the language, either contract with the city or that they will comply with this. And I wanna be real sure we've got a plan for what it needs to say.
On the other economic development side, we've been working this past month with the Legion Club and Bruce has been partying to that as well. Individuals are out there, there's some research that needed to be done and some due diligence, and one of them appears to have fallen through. And from a research point of view, I think that's probably for the best, we don't want just to give it to anyone and end up with a situation that's not workable. As long as the Legion seems to be getting some money running through these burger night events on Thursday night and able to go. They've, I met with Century Twenty-One Realtors here a week ago to look at the zoning and go over it with them. And they were going down to meet with Gene and Corinne at the time, so I know that's their position. They did ask a very straightforward question to me off the cuff, that it was hard for me to answer, but I had to give it the best shot. How do you feel about that remaining restaurant? And I told them, as an administrator of the city, that I don't care. You know, it's probably gonna be a business and it would be perfectly fine, no matter who you sold it to, it's your business, their business, and not that, the city would support whatever. However, I said, as a person who lives in this community, I would hate to see the restaurant go, and as one of those administrators that you talk about, I was one of them. And I said, so, from the city's point of view, have at it. From my point of view, I'd love to see a restaurant stay in there, especially with the equipment, so.
Are they going to sell the equipment with the building? Is that being determined?
Well, I have lectured them about that two or three times, but I think they will be lynched. They don't, and all people who donated money for a restaurant would not agree at all if it was sold to turn back into a used car shop or something.
A lot of them, the majority, I'm sure.
And the money donated for a restaurant is not for the purpose of resell and put the money in the bank. I mean, it wasn't donate money to the Legion, just to donate money to Legion, it was to make a restaurant. So, I leaned on them two or three times about restrictive covenants to keep the fixtures in place, keep the kitchen in place. I don't know that it's having any effect. Rather independent bunch there sometimes, but we'll see. I mean, I think they could pretty well bank on the fact that if they don't pull it together, and they do just sell it and take the money, they will never see any donations again.
Well, they might consider selling off that portion themselves and putting that money into a kitty and offering it back.
Well, that was one of Bruce's suggestions. If it got to that question.
Yeah, if it got to that point.
Make a plan and make a decision on that, yeah.
I don't think people, I don't think people expect that it's going to go well this point in time. You know, I just don't think it's going to be a... Not that, I mean, I don't think they're, everybody's expecting it's gonna have to be a going restaurant. I think they understand that it's going, if they would love to sell it, that's fine, but, and that's just my opinion, maybe you should have, get a survey going on that. I don't know.
All right, why don't I go ahead and if there's any questions on the economic development side, but I would say the group is going fairly well and...
One more thing on the economic development side, I see you have your handout about the sewer, which is kind of a side issue here. But we have people talking about buying the east side lots. And of course, they would not want to buy the east side lots unless they're at least planned for water and sewer to the east side. It's not on the agenda, perhaps it should be next month, there should be some thought, I mean, it's up to the board, but do you want to have a story to tell these folks? Or is water and sewer on their own?
Water and sewer along with the street.
Well, the street could be graded up at a relatively minimal expense and gravelled. I mean, I would presume the city would do that, but fifty thousand dollars worth of water and sewer might be another mess.
Street's not gonna be minimal though, I mean, that's gotta be built up and graded up.
Well, okay, talk about all three points, but if you're gonna hope to sell those right, those east side lots...
That's why we bother.
We need to be able to give folks an answer to that question. And if they're gonna buy them with the understanding that they gotta put in their own water and sewer and street assessment, that's one thing. But it doesn't make it near as good a deal as that stuff is all ready to go. What do you wanna do? We have no message right now, if you wanna get it on the agenda and ask the LBA forty people to come to the meeting, talk about this, figure out how, something?
That wouldn't hurt, right away.
And that's fine, from the March meeting, I said, you know, some of those, you know, developments, they're looking at Fifth Street and even Bell, although Bell's not as important to me right now. But Fifth Street for sure and the extension of the water and sewer would be much like Fourth Street, would have to be, go from where Wilkins is at and then go straight north. I mean, it's certainly needs to be, if you're gonna have a housing development, you're gonna have to do what Osman did not do, have it be prepared and ready to go before the house is occupiable, so. All right, any other questions on the economic development? Then I'll run through the administrative thing real quick with you, if you have any other questions, I can...
Nicole's on city sewer, right?
Yeah.
Does it end right, just east of her place?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It can go across, I mean, one of the things, it's, it is tapable, but if you go across any kind of format, kinda like what Montgomery did all the way across from the east side to his building. That's something to, you know, we can run it along what's existing of the Platted Bell, but it would be better and probably wiser if we talk next month about going up Fifth. It just makes more sense, I mean, it's, if you're gonna go to, if you look at one, you're never gonna go to the future, bring it from the east side.
If you go that direction, you can ask the sewer to run down the hill, it should be...
Yeah, great, the grade's a bit of an issue up there.
Yeah, there's kind of a press up there.
But Darnell's Corner is rather high.
And you're, you're all right, like I said, we won't get into, we'll talk about it next month, but I will tell you, the grade is always, I don't care what part of town, with the grade, I mean, some are just better than others. I mean, and you're right, we are just a flat, flat town.
But up there, you've probably got six to eight foot worth of drop from Darnell's to Montgomery's.
Mm-hmm.
So, that becomes a bit of an issue if they're wanting to build on southeast corner level.
Okay, on the administrator report, I highlighted these, you have it in the report, but I'd like to go through and just go one by one very quickly on each one, so that we can get it all done with. Personnel concerns, you know, we have two individuals now gone looking to replace with what we have intended all along to be of a superintendent position, somewhat authoritarian with the other guys. This has not changed at all, I'm not looking to replace someone and having just a crew, a team, and the idea is that someone's not gonna step in probably and bear down all weight at the beginning, but it's someone that has to work with them too. So, I think that the right person, and I've got four applications in so far, two of them look, well, actually, three of them look pretty decent. And certainly getting ready by the end of this week, I'd like to appoint, work with a committee, it's usually a personnel committee, but each time the mayor or a personnel committee, and Judy's the last one left on, and she's saying no right now, so...
Well, I think the guys have...
And I think the mayor, and if you want to, Mr. Mayor, pick one of the guys, and I don't care who it is, just someone who wants to be there in the interview process to ask the right questions and get what you want, so. And I have no issues with any council member, so, that's up to you Darren, whatever you feel like you wanna do, so. And I'll bring that to get more attention next week. Another thing we're doing on the personnel is I've been working with what's called mobile three-one-one, and that's, a lot of the communities and Bill probably has seen some of these vendors too, but a lot of the communities are going to more of a work order type, the technologies there on the smartphones. So, we're allowed to be able to put those work orders and have somewhat of an urgency rather than trying to hunt them down with cell phones. It's still using the existing technology as well as recording the data, even to the point if it takes, let's say, three hours for someone to work in the park and you're worried about like Jake being a higher priced employee. I can actually define that we used X amount of hours at, you know, twenty-five dollars an hour rather than, you know, seventeen dollars an hour, and how can we streamline that and do it better? You know, so that your use of your dollars and the use of your personnel are a little bit more streamlined, and it gets to them a little bit quicker. And the other part of the, the nice thing about the three-one-one, just on the work order side, is that it has to have a completion on it. Where we might call someone and they are busy with two or three items, next thing I know, the customer's calling tomorrow morning or the next morning and saying it wasn't done, like a light or something like that. This one has to have a completed work order so that it actually gets stamped on that three-one-one program. And I, and I just think that I need it to be able to keep track. It has a nice little feature too, I was telling Kelly, I don't know how much I'm gonna use this, but it's called a breadcrumb feature, and at all times, any hour of the day that they have the phone, I know where they're at. Now, obviously, the abuse there is that they leave the phone, sit in the shop and go out without the phone, but they're actually violating two things there. They have to have their phone on so we can get ahold of them, you know, that's one, and then two, they're doing that on purpose to try to defy the three-one-one, so. I thought that was kind of a neat feature. Groundhog Blizzard, two thousand sixty, we'll talk about it, I thought the guys did a remarkable job, the each day goes by and I get to see what, and listen to the administrators, and you heard Bill say here from even Columbus, it was a mess. And it was a reactive situation, and I thought these guys were absolutely fantastic. They had no problems coming in on Tuesday, the day of the blizzard, the office was open, the girls, there was no reason for them to come in at all. I came down and basically what I was there for was to field the phone calls and help the hospital and the manor, and we helped with the hospital on those. Because as soon as we did the routes, they shut within forty-five minutes. I mean, it was like clockwork, and Third Street was a prime example, emergency route to the hospital. You could almost go up, by the time you come back, it was already drifted shut, and Tuesday was a mess. So, that left us with Wednesday morning and, you know, they had to get out and take care of emergency routes and, and I thought they did, like I said, a great job. There are still some problem corners and things that need to be taken care of, so, that was one item, so. And then speaking of which, as they come in, I definitely want to, after they're done speaking, I wanna have the board speak back. I'm not gonna talk about the report here, but I'd like to have at least a response, if that's all right with you Darren.
Yep.
So, when that gets on the item on the agenda, because I definitely have some issues and some problems there, and we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Okay, LB nine fifty-eight was a bill that's being introduced to the legislature, and Bruce brought it to my attention, and I've been following it with the legislature. It's a lid law, and it's really kind of a nasty little thing that the governors come up with on property tax, and it's one of the worst bills I've ever seen created. It, and Bill, I don't know if you've heard a lot about that LB nine five eight to sit there, but it's a, you can tell the administrators aren't very happy with it, neither are school administrators. And what it is, and it's nothing new, in nineteen ninety-eight, we actually had a lid law, and Bruce probably remembers quite well, we were at, and I had Brooke do some research for me, the town of Plainview was at seventy-five cents. You know, and, you know, the lid law came in in nineteen ninety-eight, reduced all communities down to forty-five plus five, I mean, is basically where we sit at now. Well, now there's an effort, another effort to reduce that. And because it is a governor's priority bill, we're kind of watching that, and it would affect Plainview. Had this bill actually been in place a couple of years ago and they tried to do this, you wouldn't have seen the street work and you would not have seen the library. It's as simple as that, except for the super majority of the vote of the people, and that's not even done, so. Whether it gets out of committee, I don't know, and I said, we're gonna kind of watch it, but if it does, with the governor's urging, it will absolutely hamper the way the municipality does business. Garbage, all I can tell you about the garbage is it is up and going, initial day was Groundhog Blizzard Day. I think I've heard everything I could possibly hear over the phone, in fact, this morning, the first one that I was telling Grant was, they said, oh, Mike, I don't know how you can sleep at night. Taking away that poor garbage contract business, and I had to remind them that I didn't actually take it away, but that's okay, I certainly have had those arguments and complaints. We did have a couple people today that called in and said it was nice to see the professionalism of, you know, the new garbage service going through, picking up the garbage cans, which doesn't, you know, say anything, just gives me a kind of a reading from the citizens on how they're feeling and that. But a lot of arguments, a lot of people wanting to know about lowering the rates, and that's not understandable, because the bottom line is, is the rates that were in place and the bids that were in place were set up and designed to keep the rates where they are. So, there's no lowering, there could have been raising, but there was never an issue of lowering, because that's where you have to be. And at twelve dollars for the residential customers, you're at, you're at the bottom end around, you can find a couple of villages around that are at ten, but it's a different world when they're doing that. Most of them are at fourteen, sixteen, Atkinson...
Norfolk's twenty-six, I think.
Yeah, I mean, just, and they... Yeah, I mean, just, and they got waste connections, which is probably a little different deal, so. And I brought on here, but like I said, we got it on the agenda item later, I have a thing from the administrator's report on the rural fire board and talking with them, but we'll let that conversation come up on the agenda item. I, you know, do have some concerns, and I have looked at the issues that are involved, and there's actually a lot of things, more than just what will be discussed about the Blizzard. There's a lot of different issues that need to probably be somewhat hammered out so that we can have a cooperative, and that's why an interlocal cooperative agreement, that's why the act was put in place in nineteen ninety-three to begin with, to allow these cooperative efforts to even occur, so. So, hopefully, we can get that worked out. Comprehensive plan, I met on Wednesday on January twenty-seventh with a group, Darren was there as the mayor, and this is to look at the plan that's in place for expansion and where you need to go in the town of Plainview, as well as looking at zoning, as well as looking at housing, and all the different issues that are coming up, and I thought it was a good meeting. Lois Moser was there, and Richard Alt from the school was there, so it was a good cross-section of the community, looking at the qualifications that we sent out earlier for engineering firms. And we had four that were sent back to us. This group decided to go with two outfits to further interview. One of them was Marvin out of David City, and the other was Miller and Associates, and both put in very, very good plans, and I have no problem, I know both of them, I know JEO, I know Hannah Keeland and the other one, so. I didn't have issues with any of them, but the group did a nice job of narrowing it down to two for the interview. And Bill happened to call me yesterday, and I would like to let Bill go ahead and just say a few words for Miller and Associates. Bill, as I said, you come up, the last little item I have on my agenda is the Midwinter Conference. It is in the ordinances, and that was your blessing. I hope you don't have any problem if I go down to the Midwinter Conference, it's the one I go down each year, and Darren actually went down last year with Kelly, so if, you don't need a vote on it, but just at least a consensus that it's okay that I go and continue my education down there at this Midwinter Conference. And that's not on the mic for karaoke, Kelly, so, that's not my education.
Kelly, is it too late to put my name, throw my name back in the hat?
No, absolutely not.
He hasn't registered yet, so.
Okay, I can go now.
Now, you're back on again, so.
As a babysitter, or?
I'm not, I shouldn't say this this way, Grant, but which way?
The blind lady in the blonde.
Alright, Bill, if you'd like to say a few words, and that's all I have, and if you have any questions, I can answer later.
Thanks, Mike. I didn't mention it to a couple of you guys, but some of you anyway, I used to be involved in city government pretty heavily. I was assistant city manager in Alliance for five years, and I was a city manager in Lexington for thirteen years. So, I understand a little bit about what you guys go through, and there's a couple of actions that I've noted over the years. Number one, there's no right way to move snow. I don't care what you do, you're gonna be wrong. And number two, the legislature's really good about putting hampers on you all, but never looked at their own dictums and make cities do things which cost cities money. I watched that for a long time, and they just seem to say, it's real easy for them to say, "Cities, you can't spend anymore," and then turn around and pass a law saying, "Cities, you have to do this." Where are we gonna get the money? And it was always an interesting battle, but I'm not here to debate legislature, and I'm here to talk about Miller and Associates. I am client relations manager for Miller, I've known Miller and Associates for a long time. When I went to Lexington, I selected Miller and Associates to be my engineer. I worked with Reed Miller for thirteen years, I knew him personally. I left Lexington to become Vice President of Human Resources at Nebraska Public Power. I did that for nine years, and then I retired. I actually got early retirement, which means I got fired. I'm a terrible realist. Anyway, I happened to run into Reed, and he said, "What are you doing?" And I said, "I don't know, I just got fired, I don't know what I'm gonna do." I said, I thought, my personal feeling is, geez, I got a house to pay for, I got a wife to take care of, I got a dog to take care of, what am I gonna do? I said, "Well, I could maybe retire." He said, "Why don't you go to work for me?" And I said, "What would I do for you?" He said, "I need a client relations guy," and I says, "Huh, you know I know nothing about engineering." I said, "I know a little bit about government," he says, "There's three things that I think you'd really be good at, so what are they? Number one, you know city government, you've been around it for twenty years, you know it. Number two, you know a lot of people, because I was very active and knew my, I knew people all over the state. Number three, you know enough engineering to be dangerous." And I always remembered that, and I loved it, because I know very little about engineering. But, I do know a lot about Reed Miller, and I know the kind of person he is. There were a number of things I really liked about him, and one that stood out was his integrity. And anytime when we did a project, and a project would go bad or something went wrong, Reed would stand up, and if it was his responsibility, he footed the bill. I watched him do it a number of times, I've watched him do it since I've been with him in this capacity. It's, it really makes me feel good. I went to a community where we were doing a job, talked to the city manager, the city manager said, "I'm not very happy with what you did here." I said, "Well, let's talk to the boss." And I don't wanna do that, I said, "Let's call him." I got on the speakerphone, I said, "Reed, here's the situation, they're not happy." He said, "It would happen to do with a bid estimate. We estimated the revamp of a pool to be about five hundred thousand dollars. It came in at nine hundred thousand." So, we really blew it. And so, the manager said, "I don't think it's right for us to pay the full amount to you when you blew the estimate that bad." He said, "Well, you gotta remember, we had no bidders, nobody bid the project. Number two, we had to go find some, and they came in and literally gave their price, so you know what that's like." But he said, here's the important thing as far as I was concerned. He said, "I know we made a mistake. What do you think would be a fair price for the amount of work that we did?" The manager said, "Half of what you billed me." He said, "Tear up the old one, I'll send you a new one." I was with him one night at a community, mid in Nebraska, sitting in front of the city council, and they asked him, "Are you ever wrong?" And he smiled and said, "Yeah." Everybody makes mistakes, I don't care if you hire us, or HEO, whoever you use, engineers are gonna make mistakes. He says, "What do you do when you make a mistake?" He said, "We fix it." And his comment was, "You can't believe the number of fire hydrants I've paid to move." You know, they're in the wrong place, and we did it wrong, he moved them and he swallowed it. To me, that's one of the best things about it. Number two is, I love the way they price things. If you get a bid from us to do a job, that's the price. There's none of this, "Oh, and by the way, that wasn't included," or "This wasn't included." You know what the price is gonna be, unless there's a pretty significant change in scope of work. And then, we don't just do it and send you a bill, we sit down with you and say, "Hey, this is gonna be a pretty big expansion of what we talked about, we're gonna have to negotiate a fee for that piece as well." I know that we don't charge to go to council meetings, I know we don't charge for phone calls if your staff has a problem or something, they call, we don't charge for that kind of stuff. It's just all part of the Miller and Associates way of doing business. We work around here, we've done work in Neely, we've done work in Clearwater, we've done work in Brunswick, we're doing a lot of work with Creighton, I don't know if you've followed what's been going on there, but we've done water system, we're doing sewer system, we're doing a downtown program with them. We just are in the area, we've done work in Skredner, Clark, Central City, David, not David City, but Bradshaw, a lot of communities this way from where we are, so. We're in a neighborhood, we are a full-service engineering firm, we do architecture, we do planning, we do a lot of things. And speaking of planning, I talked to Mike a little bit, and I know we made the cut list, so we'll probably be interviewed, probably by you. I will probably not be here, I'm not a planner, I'm not an engineer, I'm just me. But, you'll have an opportunity to meet our people, and I think that's really cool, because we have a young lady who's an extremely good planner, but she's also extremely good at running meetings and getting people to participate and getting people to contribute. And once you meet her, I'm sure you'll feel that sense that she really presents. Having been through the comp plan business, you know, I know there's two pieces to a comp plan. And almost always, people wanna focus on zoning and that issue, because that's the part that has the most headaches, that's where you get the most trouble. People want you to change zoning, they want you to do special use permits, they want you to do all those kind of things. Second piece is the planning part, and that's a part that doesn't get enough emphasis in my not-too-humble opinion at times. That's the piece that's really critical for communities to look forward, see where you need to go, lay out a game plan, and as you do this, and whether you pick us, whether you pick Keith Marvin, keep that in mind, that zoning is one thing, that's really a legal issue almost all the time, because you have an ordinance that adopts the zoning, but the planning is just a resolution, it's not an ordinance. And it's a planning piece that I think a lot of people forget about. So, as you do things, like you're talking subdivision, do you have it in your city bylaws, city rules, and what you do on subdivision? Some cities pay for everything, just to get them to build them. Some places say, "We'll put in a pipe that's six inches big or eight inches big, you pay for four, we'll pay for four." Some cities say, "We're gonna pay for the parts that are in the intersections and streets, and the lot itself only pays for that." It's part of this whole comprehensive plan, the rules and regulations that you all establish for how you wanna grow and where you wanna grow. It was interesting, if you followed Neely at all, you know, they had a recall of the whole city council, and we did the comprehensive plan for those folks. And we were the firm that was so-called doing it for our own best interest. I'm going, well, I don't know how that figures in, but, we, you know, they were complaining about some of the things that were going on. Thing was pretty evident that planning is a very important part, and oftentimes a part that people don't see as being important, and they think the zoning is more critical. Keep that in mind. Again, we're full service, we do architecture, we do planning, we do engineering. You want us to look at this subdivision thing you put in the water and sewer? You got a project coming up? Give us a call, we'll give you an estimate of how much we charge you to look at laying it out, and go from there. Questions?
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity, and hopefully, we'll see you again.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, Michelle. Let's move on to number five, Mike.
Yeah, the liability insurance is up, you've seen it advertised, we brought it up last month. I'm going to hand you a bid that was submitted, and acknowledgement that a, usually on a second bid, was not submitted. I received a letter from Lois in the Town and Country, will not be bidding this year, and so you have that one bid. Dennis and I have talked about, he's the one who put the specs out, since he's our existing carrier, and so we quite well know what's going on, and I'll let Dennis speak to the bid, and I do not know the numbers. So, Dennis, would you like to address the council?
Sure. I've got some more information for everybody here. Actually, here's probably a copy of what Mike just handed to you. This is the same thing, really, the same thing, by the way.
I got an extra one. Mine's not even in color. You get the color with Bruce.
Well, I'm Dennis Johnson of Bush and Rowe Financial, and first of all, I wanna thank you for our active influence, and hopefully can you continue in the future. I'll tell you a little bit about the cover letter here. EMC Insurance is our carrier, may have carried the city's insurance for at least over forty years. They're a major insurer of municipalities in the Midwest. They're the main insurer of cities and villages in Nebraska by far. They write more than any other company. If you wanna turn to the second page where we've got our premiums listed, I can kinda give you a rundown of what that consists of. The property section there, of course, is a big part of it. And what you have there is a blanket coverage on building and contents, and that's what we call special form coverage with replacement costs subject to a five thousand dollar deductible. The generating plant and equipment, and that is blanket of nine million, three hundred and one thousand, covering the generating equipment, the switch gears, transformers, cooling towers, any related fixed equipment, and the adjacent substation. We also have business personal property in the plant there, movable stuff, and that's for fifty-two thousand. The general liability, the next section, is, has a limit of a million dollars, and of course, that's your, for example, your trip and fall, somebody from the public slips on the ice and comes back against the county or the city, that would form a general liability claim. The next is the inland marine, and what that is, contractors' equipment coverage is one section, and that's a limit of five hundred and thirty-six thousand, one thirty-five. What that consists of is dozer, graders, heavy equipment, and those are items that are individually listed. We go through this periodically with, normally with Mike down at the city, and keep that up to date. It also includes your electronic data processing, blanket coverage there, along with the software, and again, we go over that with the city employees. The next one is the business auto, and that's also a million dollar liability limit. We then have the rest of all the city-owned vehicles, some are covered for comprehensive collision, full coverage under the roof, or some are just liability depending on their value. The deductible is two fifty on comprehensive and five hundred on collision. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, Mike, it's two fifty comp and also two fifty collision. The next one is the workers' compensation, and of course, that is set by the state of Nebraska as far as what's, what's paid. The work comp is based on payroll, and that is audited once a year. And of course, if the payroll is higher, the additional premium is less, there's a refund. And of course, that, like I say, covers any employee for an accident or sickness. I don't know if you're all familiar with how work comp works, but it's, as far as medical part of it, there's, it's unlimited, the mill limit. You know, we have one that's been going on for twenty years now, a guy lost a leg, and every so often, he has to go back and use another capiche. So, these things can be huge, really. They're some of our biggest claims, are any work comp. And the other part of it is, there's a disability benefit, where the injured employee gets two-thirds of his weekly wage after he's missed a week of work. After six weeks, they go back and pick up that first week, and it's sixty-six percent because what he gets is not taxable, so he's getting pretty close to probably what he was earning before. And then, after a certain period of time, if he'll get a rating from a physician as to say he can't use his arm like he should be able to. he's, he can't use his arm like he should be able to. He'll get a permanent disability payment for that. So kind of a quick rundown of how work comp works. It's a good benefit for the employees. We have the blanket bond. And the blanket bond covers all employees for up to fifty thousand dollars for dishonesty losses. That's subject to a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible. We also, the next one is the umbrella. The umbrella has a four million dollar limit. So, you know, I mentioned before, the auto and the general liability has a million dollar limit. So the city really has a five million dollar limit. The errors and omissions liability, that covers wrongful acts that the council might get sued for. It protects the city, it protects the council, it protects all employees plus any volunteers. They're all protected under the errors and omissions. And that really should say it's errors and omissions and employment practices liability. So the employment practices is, for example, you fire somebody, they come back later and claim discrimination. That would be covered as an example, there's of course other things that would be included for that. That's also a million dollar limit of liability and of course, the umbrella's over that. So there again, you have the five million dollars. The law enforcement liability, of course, covers the police. And that's a million dollar limit again and the umbrella's excess over that. So there again, it's a five million dollar. And I think Bruce, by statute, isn't five million kind of the cap that the state has now on cities? I believe that's what it's been unless that's.
I think you're beyond to be there, but perhaps so.
Okay, well, I think that's why we come up with the five million is the state's got a liability cap on municipalities of five million, so.
Overall this year, Danny, how do the premiums compare to last year?
Actually down a little bit. The city.
It's like eighty-three or, it was like eighty-three thousand, anything?
Well, I think it was around seventy-nine after the.
It was definitely down on the north side.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little bit less. The losses have been, well, did have a couple instances last year, but if you look at about a four-year period, it's been pretty good, really, so.
What's our bond rate going into this new one? I mean, you just talked about workman's comp, where are we at with our rating? Are we above one, are we below one?
Yeah, and that's something that could use some improvement. You're at one point two zero. So in other words, average is one and you're actually getting a twenty percent surcharge. Okay? There's been some claims there and that's about a three-year look back. So I would say if you can, you know, nothing happens this coming year, the next year you're gonna see that come down, so. And that can be a big factor, you can get that down to say point eight oh. So that's a twenty percent discount off of work comp, which, you know, would be nice. You know, but that's, injuries can happen, so. The other thing, the, you are, EMC has a safety dividend program. And all of the municipalities that are with EMC are part of this, so there's a dividend. If there's a good year overall, there is a dividend paid. And in the last, over the last five years, Plainview has received nineteen thousand three hundred and two dollars in dividends. There wasn't one last year, it's not a guarantee, it's just based on the overall experience of everybody that's part of this safety dividend program, so. Questions?
Do we need to make a motion to accept it? It has reported.
Since only one was submitted, there are statutes that certainly don't apply in this case. Had Danny come in with a higher premium, you could've done a couple things. But since it's lower than it was last year, you are certainly to move on if you so choose. My recommendation is to accept it and EMC is gonna get insurance to work with. And Danny?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from EMC and we're gonna take it over our liability.
One second.
Do you have a motion in a second, Judy?
Aye.
Er, Tom, Tom, Mike?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. And Mike mentioned too, I don't know if I did before, but the city employees have been good to work with. Mike, Kelly and I, I know I bothered Melissa down there quite a bit too, but they all get back to me right away and anything we need and they'll help us, so appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
You, George, thank you, Dennis. We have, we have the fire board here, what we can do, we're close enough there. If you wanna go ahead and get that public hearing that has to go at eight out of the way and then maybe put the fire board next on the agenda after you take care of the public hearing.
Okay. Go ahead and do that, we'll go into public hearing at this time with the one and six-year plan.
Well, the bottom line on the, and I've looked it over several times. And if you didn't bring it with you, we have a copy as well, it was in last month's packet. But the recommendations, Terry, we brought a shorter list, all of them are still pertinent. Nothing needs to really be changed, there wasn't anything I wanted to add at this point anyway. We need to kinda take a look and I'm watching nine five eight, that'll be before we jump on the bandwagon. I still think we should down the road, but I would like to see how this year pans out. So to me, as far as recommendation, I think the list is adequate and is in, in good order the way it is. And that's the only thing I ask from this council is if you had anything you wanted to bring back, you certainly can and we can get it changed. But if you're okay with it, I would say either passed and we can move on.
This is like paving district.
This actually is the one and six-year plan, which is required by law. And one of the biggest keys for us, it continues to allow municipalities to receive highway allocation. Having the one and six-year plan in place and that allocation being put towards primarily most municipalities for, is existing equipment and street repairs and salary, it's in the street department.
I make a motion to approve the one and six-year.
Okay, we gotta come out of the hearing first.
I will make a motion to come out of the hearing.
One second. Do you have a motion in a second to end public hearing, Judy?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Now I make a motion to approve the one and six-year plan.
Resolution five twenty-four. Resolution five twenty-four.
Great.
One second.
Do you have a motion to accept? And a second to approve resolution twenty-four to adopt a one and six-year plan, Judy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
This time we'll move, we'll move to item fourteen, rural fire board discussion on contract and storm removal.
Tom Malucci approached me on the fourth and asked this to be added. And I know Tom's not here, but I said I asked earlier and had the.
He should, he should only be gone a couple minutes, he said. He had a phone call that he had today.
Okay. Do you wanna wait for Tom to come back?
Yeah.
Yeah? Jones here too, we'll go back to Jones.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
All right, really quick, I'll hand out, I'm here representing Brandon Hens. And Brandon's a senior in high school. And he would like to, he'd like to see recycling in Plainview. So he has a, a trailer that he has gotten. It's not a very big trailer, it's one of, it's a really, really old, if you can remember the old ones that were kinda round, so it's not very big. But he, he would like to place the trailer someplace on city property if he could. And have, and we'd start, start recycling. He would let, he would collect tin and aluminum cans, plastics one to seven, aerosol cans. He wanted to do glass, but the more we talked about it, I don't think, I think that's something that we would probably not do. It's, it's just too hazardous, I think. He has a place in Norfolk that would take the tin and aluminum and then the remainder he has placed in Columbus and Council Bluffs. And like you said in that, in the paper here, he is not planning on making any money. It's just something that he has, he has wanted to do. And it's, it's kind of a project that he's starting with Mr. Commit also. It's a, it's a supervised ag program if I'm, if I understand it right. And so he, he had, first he had asked if he could put it at the bank. And then we talked about possibly at the R C and D building. But then, at that time, the R C and D, we were working with Lathan, that's with Laurel Recycling. And he was, he had a grant that we were gonna also use, I believe there was, there was a building we were gonna use here, right? We were gonna be a site and also Creighton. And he was working on getting a grant and that grant fell through.
I saw that.
So at this point, R C and D, you know, we won't be working with him right now until, you know, until he works out something else again, I guess.
Who is this kid?
Brandon.
Brandon Hens. I don't know how to.
Lives here in Plainview?
They live outside of Plainview.
Yeah, they live outside of, he's a good kid, I think he's about, what's he, sophomore junior?
Two north.
Senior?
Yeah.
Okay.
Northwest?
Yeah.
Are they northwest of town?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Good kid, he certainly just wants to get some kind of blessing. I, Jan Jorgensen and I met with Joan and the young gentleman and I think we kinda spearled him with a lot of questions of liability coming from our end of things. And my concern was, and I certainly wanted to do whatever I can, there is some liability. I do know from talking with Danny later on, that it would be fine and it would be covered. But on the other hand, it certainly, we'd have to find a place and he would have to maintain it and keep it up, which would have to be somewhat supervised. And both John and I have talked about it and I don't have a problem or issue of doing that. And, you know, he's gonna have to make regular, because we're concerned that this effort could balloon out of proportion and his trailer might not hold enough and then you got overflow and, you know, then you defeat the purpose of beautifying, now you got trash. So, but I, I think we, I, I see no reason to somewhat allow him to.
What does the trailer consist of? Is this an enclosed trailer?
Yeah, it's, it's, many turn the specs to handle recycling is just, I know it's more of a homemade trailer
that he and Jack and I had put together, so.
Yeah, I'd say, I don't know, well, you know, it's really one of those older ones, like maybe the sixties, seventies, you know, the one that, that's the more rounder, maybe it's even more than that, maybe it's fifties, I.
Is it stock or another?
No, no, it's a, it's a regular.
RV.
Yeah, right, a little, you know, little RV that really old.
Why isn't he didn't come here to explain his program to the city himself?
Well, I don't know how to explain that to, he, I don't know how to word this. His, he comes from a family that's, I doubt the father would've let him come.
Close enough.
I think that was probably pretty politically correct.
Yeah, I.
Is he planning to be at the facility when he is taking in? Are people going to be able to drop things off there without him being there?
Yeah.
That concerns me. I mean, I, we try to recycle all the cans and papers that we can and the paper things are full awful.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't get to that green thing within thirty minutes after they dump it, it's full. I don't know exactly how that happens, but.
People like Ken Wilson, wait.
Somebody's got to do it.
We made her do it.
Yeah, and there's no doubt that we're just, I mean, we've met with him and this kid was grilled pretty good. I mean, we, and he, he understood, but I don't know how to, I mean, other than the fact it, it's gotta be a council blessing, he knows that, that's why Joan's, you know, coming here to kind of represent. I've met with the party, I have, you know, I have some issues. Can I live with it?
Is he expecting to advertise this or make it clear?
He has, he has a website, he has a website, he has a website. Kins Recycling, he has, I mean, he has an email, but he also has a website. So if you have.
All the eight-year-old little ladies will go there and rent all the.
Right, no, we'd have to, we'd have to, you know, it's gonna have to be a word of mouth thing. And at first, if, if this is something that you guys would, I guess blessed, like you said, you know, it's, it's gonna be a learning experience for him because like.
What do you expect for the trailer to set up?
Yeah, probably have four or five different little spots that can, you know, and we, I would like to see it probably more on the highway, but then again, it doesn't hurt to have it back and I can talk to Carter either.
Don't wanna have everybody have to mow around and everything like that when it becomes a problem. Microsoft's a paper pad someplace.
Yeah, we can probably, I'd have to take, I haven't really gone this far, Jones with the first meeting here. They were gonna be here last month, but we, that was right after talking with him, I think about a month ago. I don't have any real easy answers, this time I'm not, it's clear on, and I think we, and neither was Jan and that's why, you know, we're just simply maybe looking for advice to, I mean, we'd like to help.
Would Mr. Commit come?
Would if we.
We're on the slide, dude.
Is he pushing for this?
Yeah, we do a probationary ninety-day, hundred and twenty-day something. I would have to say timeframe.
Just let it dry.
Slide and try it, we're not, you know. You ruled that, we did like a probationary thirty, thirty to ninety days something?
Well, I'd say you have to give it more than thirty days.
I think ninety days. You're gonna know in the first thirty days if it is going to work or not. Yeah, well, that's true.
The city's not going to advertise it, the city's not.
We have nothing in there this year.
All you're going to do is furnish him a spot to park his car.
Yeah.
I, I would say there should be some stipulations of this is gonna be checked and stuff picked up around it. And people, seeing how people are, they'll start leaving everything for it.
Well, I think there's not what happened at the Metta's church with the paper thing. People started leaving their trash and, so yeah, he'll have to, he'll have to work on it.
Police stuff and stuff, I'd say we do it on a, you know, an ultimate basis of, you know, if it gets to be a problem, we have the right to recharge.
I mean, in the city, when they, they take glass or plastics, they have to be clean? I mean, is he gonna require that these have to be clean?
He's actually doing probably the cleaning. He was very versed, well knowledgeable when it came to recyc, I was a little surprised. I thought maybe he was just taking this on as a, a project and didn't know a whole lot about it. But this youngster is absolutely passionate about recycling and I, I don't know how to say it in your words.
Yeah, and I think what he's doing now is I think he's taking the, like tin cans and, and the plastic bottles from the school, I think he's already doing that. And then he takes them out to the farm, they have a barn or something. So that's what he said he would do with this stuff. He would take it out to the farm and then, then he would take it on wherever.
I think we're on the, do you have a specific response?
Ooh, it's a possibility, you're otherwise somewhere.
Mike, those are the people who bought that place where Scott Williams had that house fire.
Okay.
It's on East West Road.
Yeah, two north and then west a little bit.
Yeah.
Half mile west, two west.
If he, east of Split River.
They got milk out there.
On the north side of the road.
They've got calves out along the ditch.
And we had that one.
The council's gonna approve it, you're almost after approved site, though. Do you have a place in mind?
I, I, no, you have to give them some time to really, I mean, I, I will be the.
Would there be room in Genoza area down there, though?
Sure.
Or there would be?
Yeah. It's not, we got a pad, but.
Public's probably not gonna use it down there, would be the only thing.
Pardon?
The public probably isn't gonna use it down there, would be the only thing.
How about down where the transformers and stuff are and how by the road would drag?
That's another spot, we have the water well down on the east end of town. There's a patch of land that can be used and accessible and, and there's several spots. Bruce probably knows it too, he also did.
Give him a corner out by the transfer stations, is that when they start dumping stuff he can't take? He's not that far of a distance to load it up.
I don't know if there are people, you need to drive out there? Am I thinking of?
I don't know, we all are, we're close.
You're really?
You know, you know, the more I think about it, it might work, but I don't, I am a little suspicious and wary of the transfer station, even though that's what it's meant. You know, you know, the more I think about it, it might work, but I don't, I am a little suspicious and wary of the transfer station, even though that's what it's meant for. I'm not so sure DQ's gonna.
I'd be worried. I'd be worried for Christ.
Or the sixty year old.
I think something in town would be better and people would keep a better eye on it.
Do I get the sense from the council that with mine on a trial basis, if I found the spot and just brought it back to you? Is that a good enough to?
That'd be great, I will.
Brandon kind of.
I will tell him and we'll talk to you and find a spot and then we'll keep an eye on it. Thank you very, very much, thanks.
Thanks, Joan. Okay, let's go back to number fourteen, rural fire board discussion.
No Tom yet?
No, Tom, no Tom.
Did they wanna wait for Tom?
Well, they said they didn't mind, but I, I, the only reason I asked about it is Tom's the one that put it on the agenda and I usually don't.
He didn't act like it was gonna be very long.
Do we think Tom is here or did he have to?
He had, he had a phone call.
He had a phone call.
I mean, is he standing outside the door with his cellphone that we can ask him or?
Here he is.
Let's look.
There he is.
Alright, here he is.
Now he's had to worry about Mike if he's locked at the door.
Okay, Mike, I'll let you start on fourteen.
Well, I mean, I don't really have a whole lot to do with this one until I have a response. Tom brought this to my attention on that morning and so you can certainly, if you wanna have the rural fire board, speak to the council and go from there.
Alright.
I don't plan on saying anything until it's done.
Okay. Do you want to start, Tom, or you want?
I, I really don't have much to say. I asked them if they wanted to be present to express their concerns or whatnot and kinda go from there.
Brian, did you get nominated as spokesman?
What's that?
Will we be nominated as spokesman?
Yeah, send the young buck up.
Alright.
I guess we just had an issue down here of this last snow removal, about getting an ambulance or anything out. But I guess there's, there was no possible way it was probably gonna happen if they had a call. And it took longer than I think it should have probably. I don't know, I guess, before we had, it got cleared out pretty fast and now it seems to be taking a while this year, so. We need to get something figured out, I guess, you know, that needs to be kind of a priority down there. Maybe not right away on the list, but, you know, at least get a couple, a couple slots made so we can get equipment out if we need to.
Do you have equipment that goes out the east side or not?
The east, yeah, yeah, both sides. Pickups go out the east side.
What goes out?
What's that?
What goes out the east side?
The, like, yeah, the pickups do, the grass rigs or just, there's a couple pickups that go out for, carry, you know, equipment. The trucks, the trucks and ambulances are on the west. But with this last wind, you know, it's out of the northeast, that, I mean, to me, that's kind of a rare wind, usually it's out of the northwest. But it just, they come over that building, just dumped it right on the west side there. And, you know, that's why we got a, kind of a big issue right now, but, um, we just, we need to get something, I guess, figured out. You know, that needs to be kind of a priority down there. I would think, I would think everybody would want a priority to get, you know, if a call comes in, which we did have a call at eleven that day. Thankfully, somebody in town was down there cleaning out or they wouldn't have got out, so.
Just a thought before you get into all the gruesome details. I mean, this is an ongoing issue, it's going to be an ongoing issue if it's gonna continue to be discussed. Would it not make sense for the city to kick in another five hundred a year or whatever? And just have the rural fire board hire their own snow removal contractor and be done with it? And get whatever priority you want? City cough up most of what would be the estimated cost on an annual basis and done.
That's a council decision, I.
Well, I know, but I bring you, I'm just throwing it out as an alternative.
I know, you and I have talked about it.
Why continue to have the discussion if it's a concern for ultimate priority for the fire board to get us done? And the city has a thousand priorities, why should they not just hire somebody whose duty is to come, take care of the fire hall? And the city donate a large part of that cost? I mean, pick a number, you'd have to get a bid, you'd have to get somebody chosen. I would think on an average basis, five hundred bucks might come pretty close. But in a bad winter, maybe it wouldn't. We have a snow removal lab here. This is probably beyond the capabilities of the Hornet. Probably a little green tractor. But what, what would you guess, Mike, somebody might bid for an annual contract for snow removal lot? Well, I mean, I would have no idea, I charge sixty bucks an hour. Well, I know, but. You're probably talking down there, it's gonna take you probably two to three hour minimum just on a normal snow. Two hundred dollars a time, I would say, three, four, five times, maybe five hundred doesn't cut it, maybe it's a thousand dollar deal on an annual basis. I pick a number. But it'd be pretty easy to hire somebody whose duty is come, keep the fire hall clean. And not have this priority discussion scattered all over God's street.
Well, we're not asking you gotta have every snowflake removed, I mean, you know, nothing else, just.
Knock the six foot drip down at least?
Just so the guys can get in, I mean, get a couple slots on the building done, I mean, there's guys around. It, it don't take, I mean, you got a big payload or don't take long just to run down there, you know, make a couple passes. I mean, yeah, then come back later when you get the streets, when you got your priority streets, you know. Not saying the whole lot's gotta be cleaned up right now, but.
I guess that was our major concern, get it so you can get the trucks and the squad out.
And the place for the guys to park where they, when they go to the squad.
If you had three, two or three swaths with the side truck to throw it out, you could always come back later with the payload and do finish it. You just gotta, we was fortunate last Wednesday morning. I mean, that was, that call come in an hour after I counted down that morning, there'd been no way we would ever have made it out of the fire hall that day.
Kyle, I can see your point. Now, Mike can vouch for me at this, I don't know if they ever did it when he was a gas man, but they sent us home at eleven thirty on Tuesday. That's the first time in nineteen years I've ever been sent home because of a snowstorm.
Like they were sending us home?
I'm sure. So, and I drove, I left the office and I just kinda made a sweep around town just doing mayor duties. And you guys couldn't have got a fire truck down any street in town?
This was Wednesday morning?
No, I know, I know.
Wednesday morning you wouldn't have got one down.
No, you wouldn't have.
I pushed three foot of snow to get to my truck.
Right, but you guys gotta understand, when that call comes in, the dispatch center also calls Pierce County. Or if it's in town, they will be calling the city to notify you that there is an emergency call.
Well, I think at that point, I mean, in a situation like we had, I don't think there'd be any problem that you would call the city and say, we need to have you plow.
We got a house, we got a house on fire, we got someone with a heart attack.
And I think that's a problem, but I think the problem with stemming, because we had an employee that used to work for the city that normally took it on himself to go down there and clean it out. Well, you know, a little shorthanded and stuff, but I think that's why there never was an issue. And then the bylaws here, it does state that yes, we're liable to remove snow. I'm not saying it's not an emergency. But it doesn't say in here that, you know, it is an emergency snow round.
No.
But it is important, don't get me wrong. But I think, you know, you're probably on the right track. You know, if we can get down there, do our emergency streets and maybe go down there and get it open so you can get out.
Opened up, yep.
And come back later so we don't have to stop and do the whole fire hall.
Right, no, that, and that's not what we're asking, just get it so you can get the trucks out.
I don't know what everybody else's feelings are, but, I mean, it is important.
You got a lot, you got a lot of people, I mean, Yostin will sit there and, I, I want a chance to sit there and speak to this. Cause this is not gonna be just easy and sit there and let this go, I'm gonna basically lay out the facts. Okay, and I don't wanna do that because this is just absolutely got way out of control. That phone call came in at ten o'clock in the morning and Mike demeanor with Mr. Tar was absolutely wonderful. All he had to do was say, Mike, go out there and take care of it, by the way, which was done ten minutes afterward. I asked Kurt Hart to go out there, Kurt Hart screamed at me and said on that west side that there was only four inches. If they couldn't get out on that, they shouldn't be able to get out at all. That being said, I'm gonna leave that alone, but at ten, all I ask for is common courtesy, this is an interlocal agreement. All you gotta do is ask. Every town, Brian, every town that's around, Pierce included, when they had that blizzard, I did some checking. What they would do is if you have an emergency, get out there with your snowplow, you have a snowplow on duty. You have a snowplow on hand and they would plow ahead to get it there. That phone call came in, believe me, that, that page came in, trust me, I know who it is very well. And I would have just as much concern as anyone in this room on who it was and everything else, cause that's why we have a dispatch in the city office. Would have been there in a heartbeat, here's the problem, we got the ambulance out, which I have no problem, but we all said the same thing. Our guys were working from five o'clock in the morning to just get anything open because there was no place for anything to go. You couldn't get out and even when the ambulance did go out, they had to be met by the county to get them out to the house. I mean, so we were trying to do the best we could and we've always done that. There's not one time in the seven years that I've been here that we did not go out there and plow that area there. Twice this year, we've had issues, two times more than I wanna have. And I, and I will not, and I will not sit there and be as cooperative if I'm demanded, if it's told me, you will. You can ask and we can go down there and do that as a cooperative agreement. And then you certainly aren't gonna threaten with something that was totally way off base. And I don't have to do that for Mike Holton, that's not Mike Holton as administrator, that was also told to the mayor and to you, Mike. And so I'm not gonna sit there and take that lightly and say, well, we're just gonna bend over and bow down. I'd like to see a cooperative arrangement, I wanted this interlocal agreement tooth and nail from the beginning to the end. And I'm just glad that I wasn't administrator back at the time it was signed. Because I would have had a few words then too, I think there oughta be a little bit more. When the interlocal agreement act came into place, it is supposed to be a cooperative arrangement. Cooperative arrangement between two entities. Okay, go ahead and look through this and I, I dare you to go through it, you know, word for word and look at it and just tell me, sit there, what have we done wrong? Over the years, if you want me to sit there and tell you the number of equipment that we've used and lent out from city? Every time Tim Cooper went out to there to help out as a fireman, which I have a great respect for him, I knew about it. Cause he'd come at least tell me, was it on city time, was it on city dollars, every time. That's the cooperative arrangement that we use, Tim's money didn't come from any place else but the city to help out. Mike McManaman was eager to come down many, many times and I enjoyed that, but he came down and borrowed the mower whenever he wanted to. We have been very cooperative, this little incident here with the snow was not a cooperation at all. We were up to our eyeballs literally in a blizzard. If they needed to get out with an emergency phone call, we would have been there in a heartbeat. And there is no such thing about lucky, we'd have been there on call because we were there. We were there all day for the blizzard on Tuesday and we actually went out. Tiger Dickinson came in and asked very nicely during the Tuesday blizzard, which meant nothing, cause we couldn't do anything very much. If we go out and clear out the west side so that they could get out. We did, in the middle of the blizzard, did it blow back shut? Sure it did. These are the things, I mean, this idea that we're gonna sit there and get into this match and arguing, I'm not going to. We wouldn't have changed a thing on Wednesday, how we did the streets. That's what you gotta understand, there was no going out there, we were on time. We weren't late on Wednesday, nobody was late, there were towns that didn't even get scooped out until Friday morning. We were actually, as you've heard from other people tonight earlier, we actually as a group and a staff did a remarkable job with the type of blizzard and Monday snowfall that we had, period. And I've told the guys that too, don't you ever take it, you know, sit there and hear this. And then while I'm on it, one last thing, all this is said and done and why I'm a little bit animated right now and cause, cause there is part of me that does have a little bit of feeling too. I like this town and I support this town one hundred percent when it comes to the firemen or when it comes to anybody at all. And when my wife is approached in cases and there is, and I know who it is, and I'll certainly be glad to share it with you, a terroristic threat saying, okay, Holton won't do his job, so therefore if his house burns down, nobody's gonna go to that house. Nobody from the fire department's gonna go there because they're gonna let it burn down. Now, I know the source, I know the person and I know it was taken down, but that threat should never happen. And that's how, you know, how do you think that makes my wife feel who has nothing to do with it? We didn't do anything wrong. That's the problem with this whole scenario right now, the city did not do anything wrong. If they wish to have it cleared out a little faster, I agree with Bruce. Do I agree with extra money? No. But that's my job as a fiduciary agent for this council. Of course I don't think you need to pay them, you pay them eighteen five, use that. If you choose to wanna pay some more, that's a council decision and I will appreciate it and I will apply it. You know, but yes, if they want it done any faster than the city can do it, then they oughta be able to go out there and do it on their own. That's the way it should be handled.
What time do you guys start plowing Wednesday?
Five o'clock in the morning.
So, twenty minutes just to run a payload or a truck down there just to make a couple passes, it's not, we're not asking for.
They do have a set pattern, they're going with emergency, we haven't even got through the emergency streets.
I know you got emergency routes, but how many guys do you got, I mean?
Wednesday morning, we had, we had three.
The three guys.
Well, I'm just saying.
We had three guys and by six o'clock in the morning, I had called one of them and two of them were stuck.
Yeah.
They were stuck at six o'clock.
In front of my.
They were trying, in front of my. They were doing everything they could to sit there and the fire hall was not ignored.
No, I'm not saying it was ignored.
But I want the, you know, for some reason, there's this issue between the fire department right now and the rural fire board on the city not cooperating. That was not it. We couldn't have changed or probably done anything different, nor were we going to. Until Kyle called and then I said, you know what, let me call the guys and I'll see when you get them out there. By that time, it was too late, the backlash came, well, we think it's too late at ten o'clock in the morning.
So if a call to come in at eight o'clock in the morning, what?
We sent a snowplow right there to let them out and you would have got out to the highway and went nowhere.
So, just run down there right away, when somebody gets, just say, hey, just run down there and do it quick.
I, I don't get it, I don't understand. What's the difference?
Because then it's, because when that call comes in at eight o'clock then, hey, we don't have to go bail the fire department out, there's an extra fifteen minutes that you guys, it took somebody to get down there to get that plot out, that somebody's houses, your house, my house, anybody's house is on fire. That extra time it took for you to get somebody down there to clean it out to, so they could get out, that might be.
Okay, Brian.
It's, it's not fine.
If it's gonna take somebody fifteen minutes to get to the fire hall to clean it out, then what do you think the streets are like in town?
I'm just saying, I'm not, yes, this snowstorm was triple bad.
Yeah, this was, this was horrible.
I, I'm.
This was an exception to the rule, haven't had any problems in seven years.
I'm not, that's what I mean, I'm not going to this storm, cause I know it's bad.
This storm was bad and it was bad on the guys.
I, I'm agreeing, but I'm just saying in future, let's just say, you know, not near the severity. Just, if we could just get a plow down there just to make a couple passes, that's all our ask, like I said, you don't have to plow the whole dang lot.
And I don't have a problem with it, what I'm not gonna do is, is where does this, and even look at the agreement, where does the protocol come in? Who calls in case we're not there and say, hey, you know what, we need to get this done? Who is that that's supposed to be giving the call and asking or is it telling? That's what I mean, I'm like, who's the one, who's in charge of supposed to calling? Cause when I called Mike McManaman, he had no clue, he was getting out of the shower, I said, Mike, do you need, you know? So maybe things have changed since then, I don't know, but it is personal when it's brought up to my attention that Mike Holton as administrator doesn't think anything highly of the fire board because I do. And then when I get a threat on there that had to come from some individual from, that was talking about the fire board and what happened and threatening my house to burn down and nobody come, I know you didn't do it, Brian.
No, I'm just, I don't really think about it, but.
I just know it came from someone and I'm pretty sure we have that already located. And anybody wants to ask, this isn't a hearsay, I would be glad to tell you who it is.
No, I know we don't have a deal here that says at eight o'clock in the morning, you gotta be down there, I know we don't, it's just, yeah.
I just wanna know what you want, Mr. Kyle Tar, I mean, I'll ask you, what is it you want that we haven't been able to provide? This is absolutely out of control.
I guess my feeling, and I've talked to Tom, is it, it always has, or thought it was that after you got down to work the snow routes, you did a couple passes in front of the fire hall.
And what was your words to me on, on the Wednesday?
I called you and I asked you if you could get down and get the fire hall.
And I, what did I tell you?
You, your exact words was, we'll get to it when we get to it.
Mm-hmm, and what did I tell you we were doing?
You were on the streets.
We were on the emergency routes.
You hadn't moved to any other streets?
Downtown wasn't even touched hardly.
No, it wasn't, Kyle. I didn't, I didn't go to work, I. No, it wasn't, Kyle. I didn't, I didn't go to work, I didn't go to work Tuesday or Wednesday morning.
All I'm saying-
I parked in the library lot.
All I'm saying, where did the, where did the threat come up with that we're not gonna let you put snow in, on our land?
Matt made the comment to me that maybe we should just hire it and be out, and the city be out of it. I said, if the rural district has to pay for it, then why should we let the city pile snow down there? I mean-
I'm done. That, I mean, to me, that-
That is, we're lighting the city pile snow down there, 'cause it's convenient. Uh, when they, when Jim mows it, he fights the ruts, the rocks, everything, all summer long. We don't say a word. We take care of it. If we have to put out of our pocket to pay for the snow removal, I guess, then, yeah, I, as a rural board member, I don't think we should have to clean up the concrete, the tracks, and everything from the winter.
I mean, the rural board can do what they want.
And I don't know where the house burned down come from. I've never heard anything about that at all.
And it's not you, so I'm not blaming, I mean, I would really hate, I would be hurt to find out it was one of you guys. I'm telling you, that is very hurtful, and I know it came from a body, from the fire department, that somehow has friend, and I understand that. I know the name, so it's not, but I know it's not you, and I'm not blaming you, but I just wanna know, when I called you, Mike, was there any problem that I had of trying to help out? Have I ever not been cooperative with the rural fire board? At one time in the seven years I've been administrator, have I not bet over backwards to try to give you whatever you needed, whether it be for the bull ride, whether it be for lawn mowing, whether it be from trying not to go onto the grass when we were told not to go on the grass, 'cause it would make Jim Knauski upset. I had to go over to the street side. I will continue to be as cooperative as possible. This one snowstorm was an anomaly. If we'd like to work together in a cooperative fashion, I'm fine, but I'm not gonna have somebody call and just tell me. You know, you will get out there when we're up to our eyeballs, once again. We can get out in emergency if there would've been a phone call. That phone call would've came, you'd've had, Kurt Hart was there within ten minutes or less of when Kyle called. He went out there and took care of that west side, ten minutes or less, to scoop it out exactly what Kyle wanted. Half hour later, that phone call came in. Ambulance was able to get out. Everything was the way it was supposed to be. Okay, and that goes in any situation. I would never let anything sit there and try to harm anyone in this region or in this town. Ever. That's never been my position. You know, we were doing the best we could with what we had.
You said Kurt went out and moved the snow?
Within ten minutes. Within ten minutes, he went out there, and he called back cussing, because he said there was only four inches.
Well, I can tell you why, then. 'Cause Jim Johnson had already been out there with his tractor and loader and moved it.
That could've been. I have no idea. Kurt went out there, there was nothing. He said, what am I doing out there?
He was out there with the snow blower, and Jim Johnson from down the highway, and he moved all the snow with his tractor and loader. That's why there was no snow.
And that's great, that's great, but I mean, Kurt went out there to look, and he couldn't find. What am I supposed to scoop?
That's why the snow was moved. Jim Johnson done it already. He come in with his tractor and moved it all.
And I will say in appreciation and drop it at this mayor, is that I am very appreciative of every single citizen in this town who had equipment that was able to assist in any way possible. They were phenomenal. Jim Johnson was phenomenal. Nick Langenfelder was phenomenal. Mike was phenomenal. Everybody was very good at trying to help out, and not once was there a complaint. In fact, I have got a bulletin board full of thank yous for the way the staff took care of the snow. And that's why I would like it to continue. I don't want a bad mark to sit there. The staff did a remarkable job of getting the snow cleared.
So what are you gonna do? Are we going to write up a new policy procedure, have a committee work with the board, come up with a written definition, or are we just gonna have this discussion every month at snow day?
Well, I would, personally, I would say that what we should do, this is what I think we should do. Is we should go and do the emergency routes, and it is important, and that was an isolated situation that probably got out of hand, but probably wouldn't have went anywhere. People couldn't get out. I would say that from here on out, we do our emergency routes, and then go out there and make whatever passes need to be done.
Two or three paths in front.
Until we get time to come back and move the snow.
Is it, you guys are mostly concerned about the west side, right? 'Cause that's where you're squatted. The grass rigs and everything else, you wouldn't use those in winter.
You could get out the west side.
We can get out as long as the west side was clear.
In our normal snow, with the northwest wind, it usually blows kinda clean on the front, so we don't have an issue. This time, it just don't do it there, right over that west side, 'cause it was deep.
It was horrible on Tuesday, Mike. It just kept, it was, yes.
But you have to understand, too, that it's not gonna, I mean, if we're having trouble getting our emergency routes to Osco Manor, we ain't getting out there, so those are done. And if it need be-
There's enough other guys with tractors and kind of, call us. We gotta back over block from you.
But I mean, if you need to get out in an emergency, come down to the white plant.
Dispatch will be doing that, because she called me Monday night. She said, just to let you know, and I'm letting all the fire chiefs know, that if we have an emergency call, wherever that call is, we will be calling somebody with a snowplow to escort you there. Whether it be the city or the county or whoever, so.
That's, that's my thing. I don't want this to turn into like two separate, we're too small, and we all work together all the time.
Just get this resolved, and if that would work with everybody involved.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I really am. I really am.
We'll do our emergency routes, and then we'll go out and get it so you can get out, and we'll come back later to finish up.
That would be the smart way. I just want the board, if they would, because it was, it was, I mean, and I know it's social media, and everybody gets bashed on it and things like that. I never in a million years thought in my town that I live in, I would get threatened, you know, that the house had burned down, and I'm assuming, looking at you five right now, well, that's not gonna happen, and I understand that, but it, my wife was visibly shaken, upset. And then, of course, the next step was she asked, Mike, what the hell did you do now? And that's exciting. I didn't think I did anything, so. But somebody had passed along, and I mean, I just didn't, that's, if you could on a board meeting, say, hey, we wanna work together, that's fine, and just call them, and just call. If it looks like it's getting out of hand. These two snowfalls this year, that was the case with both of them. That first one wasn't, little did we, you know, forget about that one. That first one was a real stupid snowfall, too. A lot of sleet and ice and snow, and neither one of our snowfalls have been very good this year.
Not the right ones. So do we wanna, or do we need to amend this interlocal agreement, or is everybody fine with the way we're gonna set it up?
As long as you know, you know.
I'm good.
You don't have to go through this issue every time we snow.
Nope, as long as we know that it's gonna get done after emergency.
I would say if it's, you know, if it's not huge, we're not just gonna run right out there.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's, emergency routes, and then we'll come out, do the passes, come back.
You came to this service. You're not against this.
Yeah, I'm not.
No, 'cause I damn sure would want you to be able to get a truck out to come to my house.
Yeah.
You know, I probably gotta make phone calls.
We gotta understand, it's a priority. It's just that it's kind of a misunderstanding what's going on.
I will compliment the city, 'cause I had to go to Fortton Thursday to do my dad's taxes. And I know we got more snow here than Alvin and Fortton and hell, them down there. This town, a hell of a lot nicer to get around in than I would land down there, and I will come to the city.
Well, just even Creighton and Hosman. I mean, Creighton, and they don't have a snow blower, but even Creighton was mountains in the, you know, still till Friday morning, and that, and there's nothing they can do, but that's why I said, I thought the guys did the best they could, and yes, we will be cooperative, and yes, we will do that, and if it happens to be a time, I still wanna know before we just drop it, where does the protocol come to calling? Who's the one that's gonna call? Is it Tiger? Is it Kyle? Is it Mike? Are you the chief? Do you wanna call?
To be honest with you, there shouldn't have anybody call now that we've got it figured out.
It would've happened anyway, though, on Wednesday, regardless.
Well, communication, though.
That's all I want.
Either Brian or Mike, whatever. Brian, I assume you don't want, I mean, is Mike all right if there's communications to do?
Well, yeah, 'cause I'm clear as heck in, I mean, I ain't gonna go with-
I'm just talking, you got the flu.
And you're not gonna know what this report looks like anyway.
If I lived in town, I'd personally clean it myself. I mean, just, just to have it cleaned, I mean, but, but I don't, so.
Mike, is it all right? You'd be the, okay?
I just, just to get a phone call, because if it isn't done at the time you need, if there is a snowstorm, and you're gonna run into them, we're not done yet. I mean, I hope we'll be alive a few more snowstorms, that if it gets to be a point where it's ten o'clock in the morning, and we're with the emergency, and you wanna call them, then I can at least send them. That was my hope on Wednesday, is just to send them out. But obviously, he didn't beat Jim Johnson, you know, so.
Yeah, just, yeah, I mean, I know you guys gotta get to some streets, but once you get a start, yeah, just.
Well, like I said, we'll do our emergency routes first, and then we'll make our passes.
'Cause I always figured emergency streets and emergency routes, and then the fire station with the ambulance and fire truck is the kinda next emergency.
'Cause then at least you get to the hospital.
Right.
Yeah. And it brings out the worst of all health conditions and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, sounds like that.
And attitude.
Just 'cause you were under your cab going around, um, Brown was in Mexico.
Great relationship.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, guys. Remember, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
And I gotta see most of you in church half the time, so I don't wanna sit there and get, you know, skewered, so. At least, I think I do.
I got one thing, with that being said, with what Mike has run into, I think the department and the board should probably deal with the issue that was presented to Mike and his family.
We gotta know who it is.
That can probably be taken care of for ease.
Yeah, just, just talk to- I have a good idea, Kyle.
Should be not tolerated in any way, shape, or form.
I know, I always, if that was anything to do with us.
That would drag the integrity down of myself, speaking as a fireman.
I'll, Kyle, I'll call you.
That's on Mike or whoever.
I'll, I'll give it to them next. So at least at the board meeting, if it is, and where I think it's coming, I don't wanna accuse them, but I know who put it on there, but then I know where it probably came from, so. Yeah, I'll let you know. I just don't wanna do it in person.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
You. All right. Number seven, approval of library payment to Radec for seventy-four eight sixty-eight twenty-nine. Yeah, we're pretty much, we've got too many irons in the fire now.
We're making a motion to approve a payment to Radec for seven-four thousand eight sixty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I'll second. You know, we're only done with, maybe just stop paying, finish the work ourselves.
Yeah, on weekends. We have a motion in a second for library payment to Radec for seventy-four eight sixty-eight twenty-nine. Judy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Uh, next item, approval of payment to-
Northeast Nebraska Economic Development.
Yeah, that, district, of eighteen-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve payment to Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District for settlement.
Can I say something? We have a motion in a second for Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District for eighteen-thirty. Judy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Grant? Nine, approved, approval of resolution number five twenty-three to finance backup generator for primary water well from Altwine Electric Motors for thirty-one oh-ten, thirty-one thousand and ten dollars. Madison County Bank at two and a half percent over three years.
I think all of you received the email, as FYI only, that I did have the conversation after the last meeting with Bill Altwine, and this is start to finish, including helping the guys in the port of Pat. I mean, everything but-
Running the power.
Running the power underground or whatever to it, so he will be here from start to finish.
He's gonna stay in for the payoff.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution five twenty-three.
I'll second it.
So motion in a second for approval of resolution five twenty-three. Judy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Grant?
Christmas, well, I'm hurt.
The people do more happy days. He doesn't venture. He kinda hobbles around.
All right, discussion action to advertise for bids for farm ground rental, transfer station in the Z and D side.
You know, all of the points.
Okay, I was just gonna say, you got a copy of the one last year, so I don't know if you guys wanna make any changes to this, or this is advertised, it's what I had added today, so. I don't know if there was any changes or any wording or things different you guys did. I just pulled last year, go quick.
This is the month we advertise to, we've done it different timeways, we've done it different ways, and I think through Bruce and myself over the last two or three years, we're kinda coming down to a formula, if this is what you choose to do.
This is kinda stabilized. I mean, I don't know that you need any formal action, other than have an understanding of the plan to get about it.
Yep.
Okay, and that's, I mean, the only thing you had in February, and Bruce is right, was I think at that time you made a motion just to approve it going for advertising. You just wanna tell me that's just as good.
Look, I have a, a resolution, if you want formal, but fourteen acre, more or less, east of the old dump site. The, what we had advertised before was eighteen to twenty, more or less, down in the, seventeen when they measured it. But I don't know that you need a formal resolution either. It hasn't worked, it just goes with the others.
It's on you.
Okay. That runs for two weeks, and then in the March meeting, we open them?
Um, was it March or April? It must be March.
March, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Oh, this one, this one's gonna have some discussion, I already know.
I wondered if the Catholics were gonna start doing.
Should've done it last year, but I couldn't get them quite finished.
Number thirteen, approval of, what is it?
Special designated.
Special designated.
License.
For Saint Paul Catholic Church Fish Fry on March eighteenth.
The eighteenth is the main thing, you said the nineteenth is the backup, I thought. It says in, it says in the-
No, you didn't got that right.
Well, Friday, Friday.
Whatever the Friday is.
Eighteenth, alternate day.
Nineteenth.
Friday. Three, two, one.
They're just gonna do one Friday night?
Uh, they're doing one on February nineteenth. Maybe that's where I got the dates.
March?
We're doing the one on February nineteenth.
February nineteenth without the liquor license. And then we'll have a new one with the liquor license in March, after we figure out all the mistakes we made in February.
Yeah.
Eighteenth is Friday.
Guess I don't see a problem with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the-
As long as they have bouncers and-
Yeah, well, that's up to them.
That's Mike and Paul have it, yeah.
The special designated license for the Catholic Church Fish Fry.
Does that have dimensions for both locations?
Uh, both as in-
Alternate and parish, alternate's the basement.
Yeah, it probably should've, but-
That's up to the state.
I would say the state will kick it back if they don't have a, it's a good catch. I didn't, I didn't look at it. Yeah, they should have the dimensions for both.
So it's sixty by eighty. I imagine that's what parish hall is.
What would you have, basically?
Yeah.
This is alternate.
You're right, Tom. It's probably on the, um-
With the location, with the latos, the next day.
The, why don't the dates go to a different location?
Yeah.
The nineteenth. Well, since it's the nineteenth, an alternate location is parish basement.
Something's running.
I bet something's booked, and then probably will.
Uh, possibly, because what would you do?
I'm not even gonna close.
But that, that might not, might not necessarily be different, you know, if the hall is booked on the-
Must be booked on the-
On the eighteenth, that doesn't mean that they're gonna move it to the basement on the nineteenth. So it's kinda vague on.
Well, unless we have some down on the-
A snowstorm on the eighteenth Saturday, it's already booked by somebody else, so they put it in the basement of the church.
Could be, uh, that's the only thing I can think of. Why would we go to the basement?
Inclined weather.
Inclined weather. You have your own fish, thought, um, after you're somewhere, and you can't use the hall.
It'd be a long summer. Okay, Grant made a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion approval for the special designation license for the church fish fry on the eighteenth. Judy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
For a stadium.
Grant?
Aye.
You would have to.
Mike, just 'cause you're Catholic.
We're all Catholic.
Because he's gonna be the one drinking most of the beer.
Really, Mike, with Catholic and no beer, again.
Well, I don't know.
That's like communion.
Yeah.
That's like communion and mass.
I should, I think, look like a troll.
All right. You've never seen Mike go through the line three or four times.
Do we wanna talk about this?
Uh, if you wanna bring it up, it's been handled, but it's probably FYI more than anything else. Obviously, the- Uh, if you wanna bring it up, it's been handled, but it's probably FYI more than anything else, uh, obviously, the, um, what Darren is, it's a new package, is the J E O.
Fumble.
Fumble, and.
Who's the stuff I don't smell?
That's the same, the same day, the same day it was, um, that we got the DEQ notice, um, I got on the horn with DEQ and with, uh, J E O, uh, and, uh, the only thing that I probably didn't like about it, other than the fumble, was DEQ, I don't leave a bad mark on our face when it's not even our fault. The app was sent in plenty of time, uh, the state had it, that was not the issue, it wasn't that they didn't send it in on time, but they had kicked it back. And there was a couple issues that they needed to get answered, and D E O and J E O didn't answer them. DEQ doesn't look favorably upon it and likes to scold, sometimes partially, and I basically told J E O that too, that, uh, you know, this is not good all the way around, uh, is it taken care of? And he said, yes.
Yeah, the good news is J E O probably won't charge us more price for your phone call though, so.
So the permit was ahead of digging, that's who were in?
Yes.
Yep, it was all done in.
They, uh, it was a, a really post haste thing, but the engineer took it on, set the app, and everything was fine there, we went ahead and poured, but then they had a couple questions. Well, that's where that little.
That's the gray area.
That's the gray area where their, but DEQ was fine when, uh, Roger Protsman, who is the president down there at J E O, got a hold of it.
Well, maybe we're gonna be thinking about Miller or so.
That's why they didn't make the cut on the other one, they had a bid in.
I told Bill here, when he was here, that it's all about time, and your time couldn't be any better.
Yeah. I was in that meeting that Mike had with Lois and and Donna and Richard, I was pretty harsh on J E O, and they had, they put together a very nice packet, and it looked really nice and everything, but I just still had a bad taste in my mouth from Northwest Street, and, you know, Southwest Street, that nobody could have figured out. But when you don't invite utilities to the engineering meeting, and you've got phone pads and cable pads and gas meters running in the front of the street, not in the back, in the front, and you don't invite any of the utilities?
I I can argue, I, the only thing I've ever said, I told Darren during the meeting, just to let you know that, uh, J E O is such a large group, that there's separate divisions. So while street managed to really take anything in your mind for everything, uh, the people that do the liquor have been very good, it's just, it's a different world and, but they still belong and work for the same company.
Sometimes you're way better.
Sometimes their size is their problem too.
I I disagree.
I think this was an issue nine, ten years ago also, when we brought in Miller and somebody else, because we were, I tell you what, we were that close to dumping J E O, and.
Well, now they've kind of taken the passing of the buck between their own divisions, which.
Right, which.
And it's all that, come on.
Well, and they sent the guy, they sent the guy that could barely talk to explain why there were so many foul ups in the D E O.
I question their accountability, I, that's what I'm starting to question, I questioned it ten years ago too.
That's where it did most of the passing of the buck of them, well, J E O, he's not here tonight, so we can't worry about that.
All agree, yeah, I I don't disagree.
Okay, community comments, Brian, do you have anything?
You are the community.
Nothing from the media?
Nothing from the media.
I thought they did a good job, I was stuck in Neely, but when I came home, the streets appeared to be very clear, in my opinion, I was.
Speaking of that, I seen Troy was out snowballing the intersection screener, hoping.
He was doing that and he was also cleaning out. With the hospital road.
Prepare for the phone calls of people calling complaining about the snow in their yard now.
It's already started.
That was supposed to be a joke.
They were five or six foot from the curb, which I understand.
Yeah.
And they were doing exactly what they're supposed to do, that snow blower, by going in there and opening it back, or where else they gonna put it at?
Exactly.
It's, uh, and and I, let me, let me, I did give credit to one part of the staff, and I think the council needs to know this, if you get a chance, um, I thought the the ladies, young girls, whatever you wanna call them, um, did a fantastic job handling with a lot of poise. Uh, there were a lot of stupid phone calls, I won't call the people that, but stupid phone calls in in the way they approached things. Tuesday morning, is my garbage gonna be picked up?
That's my favorite.
And you know, and that.
Did they pick up garbage yesterday?
Yeah, I had, uh, from Tuesday through Friday, I've had probably, uh, a multitude, so I don't give you, I have numbers in that. Phone calls and primarily, most of them negative, and I've, uh, maintained, uh, my cool until finally. This morning was the ultimate, and I didn't say anything bad either there too, but when they said, how do you sleep at night? And I think that was my last phone call, and that was, uh, it was, you know, just to the point where I, you know, I'm trying to do everything I can. Some individuals, citizens, have to realize we all work together, and when we try to protect the, um, individuals like Mr. Hemmingson from killing himself on the road on Tuesday, when he has to get his mail in a blizzard, it's tough, I mean, and we're really trying hard, and, uh, my wife made soup, uh, for the guys on Tuesday, and, uh, they basically stayed for all, probably eight to ten hours, really, they didn't have to. Cuz there wasn't anything they could do on Tuesday, they tried, but there wasn't much they could do.
Right.
And I think Wednesday was probably ten, eighteen hours.
They they just couldn't get home, honestly.
Couple of them couldn't, and we had one that couldn't get in, and, uh, Jason, he'd been on his last week, I I do have to appreciate Jason though, uh, who could have just checked out, his last day was on Thursday, but when he did get in on Tuesday, or was it Tuesday, or was it Wednesday? He did, he stayed the entire time, and, uh, and helped the guys with the snow removal, and, uh, yes, it's his job, but it was a call above and beyond to sit there and keep going and keep going and keep going, and all you wanna do is go home.
Well, and Tyler and Bart as well.
Tyler and Bart, I I appreciate that, I, I look of a shock when Bart, you know, I says, Bart, you got Bart coming down, but I think he was getting stir crazy too.
Yeah, but he could have been finishing on my driveway, cuz I had to go home all the next day, so I had to start scooping like I'm from work that day, so. Mom said, mom said, I'm gonna call.
Thank your wife, Tom, thank your wife, Judy, Mike, everybody, Darren, Grant, anyone that, uh, who were in Mexico. But anyone that called, your comments, tell the guys good job, it was put on our bulletin board, and he sits there at a line, and so that at least they do know, instead of getting yelled at, because we are getting the mountain phone calls and the, um, the people can't see to get on the streets, yes, it is a little hazardous at times, but as you heard and like Brian said, I know that, uh, these towns around were suffering very much, and you didn't wanna be in Norfolk. I don't even pick on Norfolk, because they're so bad, when this thing happens, they don't know what to do.
I wish I could show you the pictures my nephew took in Grand Island, fire truck got three blocks from the call, and the ambulance with two snow plows and this payloader, and every neighborhood had the snow blower and the scoop shovels out there, and the snow drift was up past the windows of the ambulance, it was that. And on Sunday, when I went to see the new baby, the plow through his street, and you know how wide the streets are, barely one car, so I looked when I turned off cuz it's three blocks and there's nobody coming, so I gunned it, but if there was somebody coming, you wouldn't have been able to meet, cuz it was plowed just wide enough for one vehicle.
Yep. Judy, you have anything for council comments?
I don't think so, Grant, you only have, did you have you filed?
What's that?
Have you filed?
To run it yet?
Uh-huh.
I'm not going.
I'm not either.
Well, their their answers.
The one that answers my question.
You know, we would never bring that up to you personally.
I thought Grant would.
No.
We can't do anything, right, I have one term's plenty.
Tom, do you have anything?
Well, if it wasn't for the pay.
I left and came back. And got back on.
They got a name from that one, I mean.
I'm on a lot of other tours.
Right. I know, that's why I'm laughing, so.
We may have to edit some of this.
No, that's pretty good, because, uh, despite the camera, I know that three of them are insane.
They've got, they've got some problems up there, man. Tom, you have anything?
I will apologize for my wife's phone call the other morning, um, I cannot control her mouth. I appreciate the fact that Troy didn't come up, but I did have a contingency plan to get out of my property, which was not a big deal, I had it all mapped out, and I was gonna dig my pickup out and whatever, but I will not pull any punches or rank or anything like that, being on the council, I do not expect special privileges or anything like that, but it was appreciated.
Tom, I already knew this, you're you're absolutely, my wife didn't figure out, she goes, what the hell is she, what the heck is she calling at? Six twenty in the morning.
Where was she calling?
Uh, Patty called my house and wanted to know if we could get Tom, Tom, get out to Schmeele.
But I had it all, I had it all figured out.
And I said, I told Chris, it's not Tom, it's not Tom, he's out there with his little hat on, scooping away, and he's not asking for anything, so. So, yes, apologies.
But otherwise, the, surprisingly enough, we did pretty well, snow wise, we got lucky and didn't have the snow or the rain underneath.
Absolutely.
And for some reason, why, I don't know, but this snow plowed off really nice, we've got mountains everywhere, but I looked at Neely and Neely was a joke, they had windrows still Friday, on all of their streets and by the courthouse. It was, it was just insane, the amount of snow.
I heard about getting onto the highway out towards maybe Cass and Casey's.
Okay, we 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 dealt with the Elm Street one today, because Kelly brought that up, so the one by Casey's, okay, we'll.
Think the block, I think it's the block east of Casey's that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the highway intersections are a little dangerous, if you get somebody turning off the highway and somebody coming down the hole.
Yeah, no, you're right. Take an alternate route.
Yeah, exactly.
Adapt to the conditions, really, people, they don't adapt well. And throw new garbage service on top of it, on a collision.
That's why I would, I would like to see, you know, it it, get rid of all these people driving around, if we did emergency routes, and then come down and do downtown and remove it set, because as soon as you open that street, they're coming out.
Oh.
And they try to come downtown, what, what are you gonna do? Don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining, the guys did a great, good. But I still think we should concentrate on doing that first.
Where people can interact.
They call and bitch to say, you know. Because we're, as soon as we open that street, it's all to the non-cop.
I I know we're close, but I got, I do have to tell you this one, one of the ones that, I gotta tell you the one here, gentlemen, I know you're ready to go, but you do have to hear this story, whether it's on is, uh, individual citizen came in to me, now, this individual citizen is larger than life, like six foot thousand and seven hundred pounds, and looks like a grizzly bear, and walked in my office extremely upset that we put snow on his property behind the Legion, but not the fire halls, there's somebody else that owns land back there, and he, I thought he was gonna rip my head off. Come to find out, it wasn't even the city that did it, Nick Lienfelder, who was trying to be nice, was putting it on Steve's, and it's even there, on his yard, now, Steve's a nice guy, so I'm not saying he bad, but boy, I tell you, it was a scary moment there, I mean, they he he came in hot.
For what, it's gonna water.
That's what, that's what I don't understand about the people that call into the city when they blow snow up onto their grass. Why they complain about that, that's free moisture, man.
It's on top of the two foot that's already there.
Right.